Are we ready?
Yep. All right, welcome to. Okay.
Now we're live.
All right, welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Travis Height, and the prayer with Mr. Mitch Carson.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for being so good to us. We thank you for being whole. We thank you for being just. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board. We thank you for our faculty and staff, and, Lord, we thank you for the kids, or we thank you for every entity that goes into our school system. We thank you for the parents. We thank you for the supporters of our community. We ask now that anything that we say and do and that we continue to do, God would be about your will and about you, and you would be in the forefront of our minds, and we'd be focused and centered on you. Lord, again, we do love you because you did first love us, and we ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. The first thing is approve the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, do we have anything to add to that?
Nothing. Officially, there will be probably three or four different information points that I'll bring out that may not be written down here at the very end, but they're not discussion or action items.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor by a short hands? Okay, let's get started. And I'm gonna take my mask off briefly, just to let you hang down. Before we get started, I want to recognize some things that has happened that relates to the school system and some tragedies that occurred over the last couple of weeks that we are saddened by, and it's quite unusual to have these many in a short period of time, and that's a lot of people that had a relationship with family members or someone in the school system. The first one is, of course, Ms. Kim Carpenter, and she's a member that's not here tonight. She was regretting not being here, but she has other things that she needs to do, and her mom died yesterday. And I don't know if you ever met Ms. Ruth, but she was a very, very sweet lady and very impressive when you met her. The other is Neil Blankenship's dad, Ken Blankenship, also passed last week, I believe, yeah, last week. And Ken was a member of this board back in the 90s. I remember that well because I was the principal at the time, and he was a very good board member, very level-headed, very pleasant to talk to, always had the interest of the board and the board on in the school system at heart, and we miss him. The other is a husband of an employee that retired two years ago, Vicki Bailey. Vicki Bailey was Vicki Dorsey when I had her in school, and her husband, Charles, passed about three weeks ago, I guess now, and Vicki, of course, spent a long time in the school and was respected and loved by everybody, and I had a lot of relationships with their family over the years, and their mama used to work with her, as a matter of fact. And so the impact, if you think about it, how you impact people on this earth, if you think about these three people, their impact is shown in their family and their children and their grandchildren. They are good, sweet families with folks that are good, outstanding people in our community. So we celebrate where they are now because we know where they are, and we are saddened for the family because we hate to see our families hurt. All right, let's start with the discussion. Mr. Sale.
This evening, I just want to bring everyone here up to date on some of the things that are happening in Raleigh. One of the, one of those areas that may impact us the most is House Bill 37. For those who are not familiar with 37, that was the movement by the House to bring 6th grade through 12th grade back into the buildings under Plan A. There is a disagreement, to a certain extent, between some of the legislators and perhaps the Department of Health and Human Services and the governor. While the governor and Health and Human Services has allowed us to bring our elementary students back into the buildings with minimal social distancing, we are still, under the guidance of the strong schools toolkit, that requires us to have six feet of social distance for anyone from 6th grade to 12th grade, plus, if you have anyone from those grades, you can only have one person per bus seat under that guidance. House Bill 37 effectively said that there would be only minimal social distancing requirements in either of those, and it would have given you complete authority to mix and match however you felt was best for our school system. The House and the Senate both passed that. It went to the governor for his signature, sat on his desk until about the last day, and then he vetoed it on a Friday evening. The Senate came back the next Monday or the next Tuesday and tried to override that and missed overriding that with a supermajority by one vote. We thought that that particular bill was done at that point and that they would have to take other action if they wanted to go around Health and Human Services. However, the Senate pro temp of the Senate has decided that it is not done, and they have agreed to bring that up for a vote again to possibly override the veto. I don't know when that vote is going to happen. It's sitting in his hands. He has to give the Senate 24 hours notification when they're going to try and override that. So House Bill 37, which I thought was gone, is not. What that will mean is that if House Bill 37 is overridden, the veto is overridden, we will have 15 days to respond to that as a school system. So you, as a board, will probably have to come back together quickly and decide what you want to do with 6th grade through the 12th grade. Once that is overridden, if that happens, I'm going to immediately move to poll our staff and to see what their thoughts are at the middle school and the high school about bringing the students back in. We did that with the elementary schools. Both times we brought students back. I want to do that again. I want to know what our staff is thinking. If you want for me to poll anyone else, the community or anyone, I'd be pleased to do that for you, but that will take us three or four days to accomplish, and then we'll need to come together and discuss where we go from there. You have any questions about that? Another bill that you need to know about, which is still being moved from the House to the Senate at this point in Raleigh, is House Bill 82. It was approved, that bill was approved with a unanimous vote by the House, and it is in committee in the Senate at this moment. I don't know if it's in the Rules Committee or the Education Committee. The purpose of that bill is to instruct all school systems in North Carolina, all public school systems, to bring students that are at risk back into a school for six weeks or 150 hours of instruction in the summertime. We, as a school system, already saw the need to do that, and we had already begun to make plans about how we and who we would bring us back into the buildings this summer, and we had begun to think about a four-week plan with two weeks in June and two weeks in July. If House Bill 82 is passed by the Senate and then signed by the governor, we'll have to extend that out for two weeks, one week on each end. Right now, we are planning to bring students who are at risk back on June 21st and keep them in school for that week and also the following week, and then take the week of July 4th as a holiday for the students, and then bring them back again from July 12th all the way through about the 23rd, I believe. We have about 300 students at the elementary and the middle school who are being considered as at risk in various stages at those levels. We have 100, where are my numbers? 100 and something students at the high school, I've got those here somewhere, who need course recovery. What that means is they haven't done as well in their courses as they probably need to, probably didn't have a passing grade, and in order for them to move past that course, they're going to have to complete some additional work. Won't necessarily change their grade on the records because that's a different process, but it will move them past that course with a P. The cost of doing that in the summertime for four weeks and six weeks is on this page for you. At the bottom. Based on, well, there are the numbers. You see them in front of you. I handed that out to you, Jerry, when you first came in.
Oh, that's a nice one.
Yes. Based on the numbers that have been given by the principals today, and using a ratio of 10 students to one staff member for kindergarten through 2nd grade and 12 students to one staff member, it looks like, for the other grades, it looks like we're going to need about 37 staff members in order to meet the needs of all the students. Using some figures from last summer, it appears that that's going to cost us somewhere around $68,000 to $69,000 a week. If you run a four-week program, that's going to push the total cost, including transportation, at an estimate of about $275,000 for a four-week program. We'll be feeding them lunch on those days as well. That will come through Food and Nutrition, and there is usually a summer lunch program that takes care of the cost of that. If Senate Bill 82, or House Bill 82 passes, that will push us up to six weeks, and that will push the cost over $400,000. There is some money that has already been appropriated or will be appropriated by the legislature for a summer reading camp, and also for another educational piece that they have put in place that comes out of, that's come out of COVID. That'll cover about a third of that. The legislation says that the remainder of this will come out of the second round of CARES money that comes out of the federal government. There should be sufficient money in there to take care of that. I don't think that financially this is going to be a crippling event, but at the same time, we have to remember that this is not going to be the only summer when these students are going to need help. So Stephanie is being very cautious with all of the money that's coming in from the CARES Act, S R 2 is what we call it right now. She's being very cautious so that we put money back so that we may be able to do something similar to this again next summer to help our students. This is not going to be a one-summer fix. There's been basically a school year that's been lost in some ways. In some ways, I don't want to step on any of our teachers' toes because they have worked exceptionally hard and have made good gains, but there are some students that have not done as well, and so we're going to have to look at a long-term fix to support the students that are struggling. That's what all of this is about. Okay? You have any questions about House Bill 82 or anything else for summer programs?
It says, is it four days a week and then half a day on a Friday? Is that?
That's the plan that I have right now. We're able to, I'm basing those numbers, Travis, on 150 total hours. That's about 25 hours a week, and by expanding just a little bit Monday through Thursday, that will allow us to turn loose about half a day on Friday, so that it'll feel like a weekend again.
Yeah, let's understand that part of that day, about a quarter of the day or something, is so they can have some activities, so it's more like a summer camp.
Right.
I'm thrilled to death by it. I mean, COVID or not, I hope it's something that catches on and shows some good results that we can do that every year.
Well, one of the pieces, if it comes through House Bill 82, one of the pieces that we will have to have in place is a strong tracking system.
Right.
With a pre and a post-assessment. We would do that anyhow because we want to see what our students are doing, and I've told the staff in the central office, we're not going to have a summer program that is in name only.
Right.
We're going to make sure that our students make growth somehow, so we'll measure that. And yes, the second, the second, the last third or the last quarter of the day will be spent in STEM activities, which have a tendency to be a little more active.
Right.
Of course, the purpose of the whole day will be to make it active and engaging because we don't want to punish kids. This is not summer school to punish anyone.
Right.
It's an opportunity to help bring them more where they need to be for the next school year.
And it can be fun for them, isn't it?
It can be, yes.
Given, jumping back to House Bill 37, I just thought about something. Given our time crunch, we have the 15 days as a board to act, and with the polling of the teacher, I think is a great idea, do we want to go ahead, and I say this very cautiously, do we want to go ahead and offer the polling as a potential? If we can do that, that way we can already have that done, so that if it does pass, that's one quicker step. We don't have to wait the four days to get that polling done. We have to be careful with it so that there's no misinformation, but kind of as a polling, like if this passes and they're able to come back, how would you feel about it?
I'm comfortable with doing that.
Okay.
And I believe that we can word that, that poll. It would basically be just a couple of questions, and the answers would be contingent upon the permission for us to bring students back in for face-to-face.
Yeah, and I think that would just go ahead, and that way we can move as quickly as possible and have plenty enough time to think about those polling numbers as well as what we want to do as a board.
Sure, and if that's what you all would like for us to do, I can put that into motion tomorrow, and we probably can have that completed before we leave on Thursday. This week is another one of those, kind of a change schedule where we have Plan A, excuse me, we have Schedule A Monday, Tuesday, Schedule B Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, because Friday is a workday. We're at the end of the third quarter. And that's why we scheduled it that way. So we could probably have it done by the end of Thursday, Monday at the latest.
That's something.
Do you want for me to just poll staff, or do you want for us to speak with the community as well? I'm pretty sure I know what.
I think staff will be sufficient.
Okay, I'm pretty sure I know what the community wants on this. It's going to be very similar to what they've said in the past, and it's not that I want, I don't want to hear what they have to say, but.
Now, is it, is it my understanding that by the end of this month, that every personnel, every personnel in the school will have the opportunity for a COVID shot?
Yes, any staff member, any person that's part of our school system, anyone who is working face-to-face with a student, including substitutes and others, has the opportunity to be involved in immunization, and all of the staff members who have already signed up for that will have both rounds of the Moderna vaccine by the end of this month. Okay. Okay, any other, any other questions, thoughts?
Nope.
I'll put that into action then, and I will keep you informed about how those bills are moving. And there are other elements of legislation that are moving right now as well that I'll let you know about as they, as they come closer. Okay? Mr. McKinney, we need to talk about the Alarca property. Several years ago, for some reason, 2012 sticks in my mind, there was a discussion by the school board about what to do with the watershed property on Alarca that's behind the old Alarca School, it's behind the community building now. It's about 40 acres, if I'm not mistaken, and at that time, there was some movement to perhaps sell that, but there was never any official action. If this board wants to begin to pursue official action on that property, to sell it or do something with it, there needs to be a resolution in place that allows you to do that. I have a copy of the resolution, and I believe that I've shared that with each of you. I believe that it would be wise for us to read that resolution and then for you to decide as a board if you want to move in this direction or not. Would you agree to that?
I would agree. Very buddy.
Okay, is it all right? I would be happy to read that to you because I've practiced. And sometimes resolutions can be a little sticky.
Yeah.
You know, and if I mess up, I'm glad we've got a lawyer on board here because he can tell me that I've done something wrong. So this is a resolution declaring a portion of the old Alarca School property surplus, whereas the Swain County Board of Education, here and after the board, owns certain real property, here and after Alarca property, known as the former Alarca School, which is described in Deed Book 61, page 384 of the Swain County Registers of Deed Office located in Charleston Township, with the Swain County Parcel Identification Number of, and you can see those numbers there, I'm not going to read them all. Whereas the Alarca property includes approximately 39.25 acres here and after property. Whereas the Alarca property is no longer necessary for school purposes. Whereas North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(518) provides that when, in the opinion of the board, the use of any building site or other real property or personal property owned by the board is unnecessary or undesirable for public school purposes, the board may dispose of such property according to the procedures prescribed in Article 12 of Chapter 160(a) of the North Carolina General Statutes. And whereas the board is a governmental unit of local government as defined in North Carolina General Statute 160(a)-274, now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows: That the Alarca property is hereby declared surplus and unnecessary for public school purposes; that the superintendent is authorized to offer the property to the Swain County Board of Commissioners pursuant to the procedure described in North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(518) for fair market value; and that if the Swain County Board of Commissioners choose not to purchase the property, the superintendent and chair are authorized to have the property surveyed and to dispose of the property in any manner permitted by Article 12 of North Carolina General Statute 160(a), using specifically the authority granted by North Carolina General Statute 160(a)-269, to receive, solicit, and negotiate offers to purchase the property and advertise it for upset bids with the board to approve the final sales price. This, if it's approved by you, has read, approved, and adopted this day, or this, the 8th day of March 2021. Now, since we're in discussion at this point, I think that it is, it's fair and right for you all to just discuss this resolution and what to do with that property, and then when we move into the action items, then we can, you can move to either, to either declare this surplus or to not.
First, did anybody got any question about, now you got a map there.
Right.
This was pulled off of the Swain County mapping, and you can see that it's isolated, there's property already around it. There's no access to it. There's a near access to the top of the property up there, we see, quote Allison, and that property from the east Alarca side of the mountain. There's a road coming back in to near there, but you still don't, it doesn't go to that property.
Right.
And that's, it goes from about mid-range on that mountain to the upper points toward the top of the mountain, and so it's on a mountaintop. And it's, I put down at the bottom, old school, that's misleading. It's even farther than that down where the old school was, and so it is hard to get to. But there has been some interest in the past or by some people around it.
Mr. McKinney, I have recently been approached by Bill Dingell of Ichthys Ministry. He has taken the possibility of this property becoming available to his board. They have not made a statement about whether they want to pursue this or not at this point. They're praying and considering that. Those are his words. And I know that there was another family who was living next door to this piece of property at one time who was interested. So as you said, there is interest, and it has been expressed recently to me, at least by Ichthys Ministries.
Just a question, clarification, is it, I've read the statute, I'll look at the statute as of yet, is the offering to the Swain County Board of Commissioners a necessary first step before?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I figured it would be, is to offer to see if they need to use it for any public purpose.
Yes.
Okay.
Which you're being not a, or deeded right away to it.
Yeah. No, okay.
And is that the up-to-date fair market value there listed?
That's on the tax records.
Okay.
I don't know where they got that, no. It's, well, I can tell you, I can tell you what an appraiser told me, what the value was, I don't do that, we can't since we got this resolution. But if you want to ask me, I'll tell you what, I talked to an appraiser, and it's a nice piece of property, but it is landlord.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
As I was reading this resolution, the first line caught my attention, and this is the first time that it really registered with me, and it says the Swain County Board of Education owns certain real property called the Alarca property, known as the former Alarca School. Does the school board still own that piece of property where the fire department and the community center is sitting?
That's something we'd have to get somebody to check and see. I would think so, because it was a watershed for Alarca School is what it was, and that's not used anymore for the watershed, so I, we'd have to go back and have somebody look at the deeds and research and see when that was turned over, the fire department, if the landlord was turned over. It may, I haven't looked at it either. You could say everything with Alarca School. Yeah, we'd have to have that checked out.
I think that that would be an appropriate first step.
Yeah.
Because of the way the resolution is reading, I want to make sure that we're in, I don't know how to use this phrase, but I'm going to use it incorrectly, Cody, according to black letter law. I don't know what that means, but it sounds like it's black and white to me, you know?
Well, that'd be in the process if even somebody were to agree to buy it, then, you know, that.
They're just talking about that 39.25 anyway, so.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be a part of the school, old school.
It was separated from the school property, and the school property had those buildings, and that was what was given.
Right.
Are you concerned that a resolution like this would accidentally encompass more property than we're intending to do? Is that?
No, I'm concerned, I'm concerned of the wording of the resolution stating that we would, that we still, the board still owns the property where the old Alarca School is, is sitting now, and that this resolution is contingent upon that fact. Okay, what I'm thinking, Cody, and again, I don't have a legal mind like you or Kim, but I'm thinking that that particular parcel of 39 acres does belong to the school system. However, if that Alarca School property does not, this resolution needs to state it, state that in a different way. They don't need to be linked.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if at any point that Alarca School property was ever put in front of the commissioners.
I don't either.
And that needs to be researched, in my opinion. Okay? So I think that that would be, if you decide to move in this direction, that the first step would be to research that and see if this resolution needs to be restated, rewritten. And our legal team, John Hitting, is, he's the property guru for school systems, and he can fix that in a matter of minutes.
But this resolution just gives us the procedure to go ahead and start it.
Yes, yes.
If we run into that block, then. And I, to answer your question, I was surprised when I first saw the value on it.
Yeah.
Because public planning has no value really on the tax book, because it's not taxed, so I don't know where that came from.
He may, he may find that out as he researches.
Really? Is there, is there any more discussion about that? Then, if we could call Ms. Treadway, one of the hardest-working ladies in Swain County, to come and to talk to us about budget amendments, and to also talk to you about the auditor contract that we need to either agree on or find a new auditor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess first off, I'll go over the budget-to-actual report, just to kind of give you a little bit of information, because I always like to explain the areas that are in red, that are over budget. The first part is on the state budget, but on here, I did note, although I misspelled it, there's three of those that are guaranteed allotments, the 009, 020. it, there's three of those that are guaranteed allotments, the oh-oh-nine, oh-twenty-eight, and oh-forty-five. So those remain over budget until the end of the year, until we budget for the final numbers on that. The PRC oh-seventy-three for school connectivity, we just received that allotment on the first part of February, so as soon as we get information that we've received an allotment, we go ahead and start putting our purchase orders out there. So that one, there's a purchase order out there, but I also have a budget amendment to budget the fifteen thousand for that. The other one is on PRC one-thirty-two for, that was part of our COVID relief funds for EC. We were in a rush to close out those funds the end of December, but there was a little bit of payroll that came through after we had closed out those funds. I have since moved that two-hundred-and-seven dollars that's showing over budget to another PRC, so that'll not show on the next one. On the second page, under Fund Four, which is kind of one-third of the way down the page, budget amendment is being made tonight for yellow bus purchases. The state always notifies us when we are due for any yellow bus replacements. So for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we are going to be receiving two new yellow buses, and that is a total of a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand six-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Once they notify us, though, we have to put the purchase order out there so that they can go ahead and secure those buses for us. For Fund Eight, which is our special revenue fund, for PRC four-twenty-nine, that was the funding that we received from DHHS for pre-K for some COVID funds for bonuses. We received some additional funding from them for some supply money, so there'll be a budget amendment for that, but there's some purchase orders out there for those. And then on PRC six-fifty, we are, we have a new memorandum of agreement with NC State for a project that they are doing, which is to, basically they're doing some research on sustainable residential broadband access to public school students. And we are receiving funding of sixty thousand three-hundred-and-nine dollars, which we are using to purchase thirty satellite dish kits from Starlink or SpaceX. And those will be provided to students, they've already determined those students through a process, who have limited to no access to internet. And so this is a one-year project. That cost of those kits also includes a twelve-month service for that. And so far, we've received part of those, and installation has begun, and I think they're already seeing some really good results from that. You could probably speak about that some more if you want to.
Well, this, this is a project that came through the hometown strong movement out of the governor's office. There, it's been fairly complicated, but it's, uh, in conjunction with NC State and the Friday Institute. We're one of two school systems in North Carolina. The other one is on the coast, and the name escapes me right now. But it's a pretty big deal. And like Stephanie said, there'll be information that'll be going back to, to SpaceX, to Starlink. And we are already receiving a notification that there is quite possibly a second round to this, of what we have, without getting too technical, we have chosen homes on the west side of the district because we had to select a grid, but we are hearing that there will be additional money so that we can choose homes on the east side of the district as well. So we could be looking at anywhere from thirty to forty-five more families that will be impacted by this. And it's pretty significant. This will give us three strong internet service providers, and I'm hearing rumors of a fourth that would be coming into this area. That, that's only happened in the past year, that's exciting.
What's the cost per, I guess, subscription or payment?
Oh goodness.
Right now, a subscription for per month is a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Oh, for the subscription, but that's not the kit, but the subscription is ninety-nine.
The kit, my understanding is the kit's somewhere around four hundred dollars. All of that, though, is paid for, all of the kit is paid for, it really self-installs in a lot of ways. We have some folks that, who we're going to call on perhaps if they, if families need help for that. The, the subscription of a hundred dollars a month is paid for, for the first twelve months. The people who are signing up to do this understand that. I have heard, Jerry, that there could be a second round of subscriptions, subscription funding, but I can't, I can't say that I know that for certain.
I was just thinking, then, when all the grant numbers out of the way, a couple years down the road, you know, what do we do?
The, the other piece of this, the equipment actually will belong to the school system.
Okay.
And whenever, i- i- if a family should choose to not continue using the service, that equipment comes back to us, and at that point, we can choose to use it however we want to.
Good.
So there's a budget amendment for that, because once we got notification and signed the MOA, then we went ahead and put the purchase order out there so we could start getting that equipment in. And that, on the two-digit purpose code, it's really from the same, the same expenditures I was just talking about, under the programs. So if no questions on that, I will go to budget amendments. Anybody have any questions? So on budget amendments under the state, there's a budget amendment for the fifteen thousand for the school connectivity. Also, there's a budget amendment for thirty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars for an ABC, what we call ABC transfer, that's us converting some months of employment for CTE. And we can use those, that money to transfer and into our CTE support services in order to buy some supplies for CTE. And then an allotment for EC of thirty, thirty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, and this is an allotment that we receive every year for pre-K services at Cherokee Central Schools. Under the federal budget amendments, we have a budget amendment in there for a current year allotment of six thousand dollars, which is for the preschool EC support and professional development. And then also, we've received some additional funding from CARES Act. We have some CARES Act funding for PRC one-sixty-five, which is, and it's for digital K-eight curriculum, and we received thirteen thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. And then some CARES Act for an EC grant of eighteen thousand six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. And that is for some future services and instructional support services as a response to COVID for EC students who qualify for those additional services. And those funds actually came through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, as we refer to as ESER. We also received some GERS funding. GERS is Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. That's the portion of all the funding that came down that the governor was able to reallocate out. And so of the, that funding, we've received some money in PRC one-sixty-nine for specialized instructional support of eighty-two thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. And this will be for instructional support to provide physical and mental health support services in response to COVID. And then PRC one-seventy, which is GERS supplemental instructional funds of twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. And that will be for tutoring after school for at-risk students and students with disabilities. In capital outlay, we have the budget amendment of a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand six-hundred-and-seventy dollars for the school bus, the yellow bus purchase. And then also, we have budgeted forty-nine thousand for an activity bus motor. And I don't know if you want to speak to that also?
There, there are a couple of activity buses, they're internationals, and I'm, I'm not sure of the age on them, but we've had continued problems with those motors, and we've already replaced one of them with a Cummings diesel. We thought we could get the other one fixed, had it towed down to someone in Winston-Salem, I believe, somewhere down there. They said they had it fixed. When some of our guys went down to bring it home, they started it up and it wouldn't start. And so they had to tow it back home. It has not run since then, it's sitting down there at the bus garage. The best fix that we can do right now is to buy another Cummings motor and put in it. I would love to be able to get some kind of a, of satisfaction out of the company that we bought that from, but we're past warranty. And I don't know how to take any other action, and I don't think that there is any other action that we can take. So we're just going to fix it. The motor cost forty-nine thousand dollars, and that includes installation. By doing that, we'll have a solid activity bus, everything else on it's good. And at the same time, I think you may have heard Stephanie mention that we're going to be purchasing a twenty-six passenger activity bus as well, for a little bit more than that. So we'll have two additional transportation items for anyone who's traveling anywhere.
I mean, would that give us?
I think six, six activity buses, to the, to the best of my knowledge. Does that sound right? Don't know. It's either six or seven.
Six and seven, but I couldn't remember.
But it's not ten.
Well, there you go.
They, they, we put a lot of miles on them.
So we were going to put that in next year's budget, but just because we have such a need for it right now, especially with the social distancing, we went ahead and are going to put the budget amendment in for now and try to get that.
And all of that work should be done inside of two months. So we'll be right at the height of, of having four sports going on. We're going to need that. It's either that or, or rent buses, and we're looking at somewhere around two thousand dollars every time that we rent something from another company. So it, in effect, pays for itself.
Finally, special revenue. As I said before, we are budgeting additional funds for the additional funding from DHHS. We received a total of thirty-three thousand, and so we have an additional fifteen thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars that we need to budget for. And then the SpaceX project of sixty thousand three-hundred-and-nine, and then also, we have to budget for the transfer to capital outlay of forty-nine thousand. So that's the, what you'll see there is the use of fund balance is that additional forty-nine thousand to transfer to capital outlay for the motor. And the rest is just budget amendments to reallocate between purpose codes. Any questions?
I'm glad you know that stuff.
There, there is no, in my opinion, which is totally uneducated, I don't think there is any budgeting or funding process that's more complicated than public schools. It isn't, it's just amazing. And Stephanie and her team, we've got the best, to be honest.
Certainly looks like it.
Mm-hmm.
No close second.
Thank you. Do you want me to talk about the audit contract now?
Would you please?
Sure. So Boggs, Crump, and Brown, that is our current auditors, and we have a contract from them for the, for this fiscal year. Last year, our fee was twenty-nine thousand six-hundred, and this year's fee that they're proposing is thirty thousand six-hundred, so just an increase of a thousand dollars. And I really think that's probably the first increase that I remember, probably since I've been here, so.
They've served us for a long time.
They have.
I don't know.
They have. Before I, way before I came here. I know it was Bowman-Boggs before, and then Mr. Boggs and went out, and Bowman went out. I think Bowman does most of the municipalities, and I guess Boggs does most of the school units, but, yep.
Any questions?
This contract, once you sign it, then, I think they, they actually have to send that to local government, who also has to approve it, so, so if y'all approve that tonight, then, Mr. McKinney, I'll need you to sign that on your copy.
I've got it.
Okay?
We're very much choice.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
Next on the agenda is, is adjusting the calendar for March, the, the week of March the twenty-second, I believe that's correct, that's a Monday. Traditionally, right now, we have Schedule A, Monday, Tuesday; Schedule B, Thursday, Friday, with a remote day on Wednesday. We need to move that remote day to the Friday, twenty-sixth, so it'll be from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. And the reason for that, we've already stated, is because the second round of Moderna vaccine is going to be administered that weekend. And what we have learned is that the second round, it can be a little bit more aggressive in its symptoms than the first, or the symptom preation. And so we need to shift that, that week, okay? And I'm, I'm pretty sure that Allison has agreed already with the Health Department to allow us to, or to, to get those shots for our staff on Thursday evening, that'll give them a full seventy-two hours. It takes forty-eight hours to get through all of those side effects on this particular vaccine. I think some of your spouses and loved ones may have experienced that. Mr. McKinney has, has requested that we talk about shout-outs for a while. The school board gave shout-outs at every meeting, and I think you may have a little bit of a different idea that you want to talk about, I don't know.
Well, I, I don't have an idea, except Travis remembers we used to do shout-outs at every board meeting, and, and we would have a shout-out for some personnel in the school system. And we backed away from that with COVID, because we also had the same night, we'd have students in here that we were doing shout-outs, and it was a highlight of our whole meeting, really, to have those students, and we did that every month. But I would like for you to think about a new way of doing it somehow. It seems as though it started getting a little, for a better word, I guess stale, it, we just, it was not like, mo, speaking of Travis, we were shouting out people, but I want it to mean something. I want it to, we have so many good people in our system, and I want us to find a way that, that when we do a shout-out, when we, we compliment someone, that it's something that really strikes home, how much we appreciate what they do in our system. Now, we could sit here and do three-hundred in one night, but that's, that, that, that lessens it some, but, I mean, and that was my whole concern before, was you'd shout-out somebody in, say, one school, and you had some in every school that you wanted to do. So I want, I want us just to think about a better way of doing it, a way that maybe we put more, for a better word, bazzard to it, to where it, it means something heartfelt, because it all, it did, but it didn't seem like it, it, it had that impact, and I want it to have an impact, because I just think I am so proud of what our folks do. I mean, when we heard tonight that the soccer, for example, just won the conference, I think, is that the first time?
Yeah, it was, won the Smoking Mountain Conference.
And, and they lost one game, that's, that's an accomplishment. And this, in COVID it is. And so there's immediate, I know all of us, there's a media, media sense of pride, but there's a sense of pride that comes every day from people like, our secretary that is here in a meeting with that smile, and the job she does, and with Stephanie and the job, and we tell her that all the time, but I hope she knows how much we mean it and how much we do appreciate it, but we've got a lot of personnel I'd like to see us do that with. Any thoughts?
It was hard to narrow down one person.
It is.
You know, there's so many, and I know we leave some out, but don't get recognized that we need to.
And that was a concern I had too before, was you name one person in, in the school that's maybe have fifty people in, or six, I mean, I mean, it's, it.
Yeah, I think there's a point in time too where we can, we'll have examples or people or groups out of the school system. I mean.
Yeah, departments, for departments.
Yeah. Well, for one, I was thinking about Allison. I mean, she's.
Yeah.
Never failed to be here when we asked her to be, and always giving us those updates. And of course, I don't want to say she doesn't have anything to do with the school, but she's not a, per se, a school employee, but I'm sure we'll have cases like that too, where we'll want to give a shout-out to somebody that's not in our system, so.
And you, and you're exactly right. I mean, this is what we're doing with this.
Right.
These folks have helped us, and I guess you got the notion, Mark, that our representative has already contacted us about something that will help our system about choosing when we start back to school on our own.
Yes.
And we appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, that is a real issue for us, and that would really do a lot for us, so. Give some thought, and if you've got any concerns, just, let's talk about them and maybe give them back to Mark, and, and let's see what we can come up with. I, I don't know if it's a perfect system, but there's got to be a better one.
Right.
Because we've kind of gone this year without being able to do anything, and, and if anything, we've had people that have gone beyond dedication this year. That's all right now, I guess, on that.
Okay. You're speaking, if I could have just a moment of privilege.
Yeah.
Speaking of shout-outs, there are some groups that, that you may not know about that are receiving some significant recognition right now. I mean, the first one you mentioned just a minute ago was our men's soccer team who just won the Smoking Mountain Conference, which is a wonderful accomplishment for them, sits on the back of Scott Klein and, and Romano Micaletti, and that senior group that has traveled with them. We just. We just had three students that were selected for Governor's School as well. For those of you that don't remember what Governor's School is, it's a summer program. You compete through application. There are interviews that are involved. Now, traditionally, the students who have been invited to Governor's School would travel to Winston-Salem or somewhere and spend several weeks. We're not sure if that's gonna happen, because we're not sure about the restrictions that we're still gonna be, under that decision will be made in May, but for a school system of 1,950, to have three selected, there were, I can't, I don't remember how many, but as, that were, were, that applied for this, but the percentage of representation in Swain County is higher than anywhere else that I know about. Those include Skylar Henderson, Allison Shide, and Avery Maples. Two of those I know are in music. And I just know that because that sticks out to me as a, as an old music teacher. But those three students need to be patted on the back, because that's an outstanding accomplishment for them. We have Junior Chef State Finalist. Now, the Junior Chef Program is a competition. It's run through the, the High School Career and Technical Education Program, Food and Nutrition Department, and there are four finalists across the state of North Carolina, and Swain County has one group. Finalists were chosen from Apex High School in Wake County. Apex is a huge school. Clyde A. Irwin High School in Buncombe County, two or three times the size of our high school. East Chapel Hill High School in Chapel Hill Harbor City School System. Another large school with a tremendous reputation for academic progress. And then Swain County. Our folks that'll be cooking a shepherd's pie. Want me to make you hungry? Made out of ground turkey and savory sweet potato topping. And by the way, they wanna cook that for you. Include Kiana Stevenson as a 12th grader, Jordan Terry as an 11th grader, Travis Franklin as an 11th grader, and Abram Thomas as an 11th grader. That's an incredible accomplishment. And if they are the winner for the state, receive a significant financial award, then they can compete at the regional and actually receive a full-ride scholarship to, what's the name of the school? Sullivan University in Kentucky. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars if they win the region. So, you know, those folks need to be, be mentioned.
Yes.
Nira Franklin as the teacher for that, and we mentioned the, the coaches. And there are a lot of people who have gone into the Governor's School process, so, including Cindy Thompson at the high school. So, those are just people that we need to be saying thank you to and congratulations.
You know, since last March, this board has been meeting twice a month, and these meetings have been stressful.
Mm-hmm.
They have not been enjoyable a lot of times because we're dealing with all these issues around COVID. And for the two new members, it took the fun out of a board meeting. The fun out of the board meeting was what he's talking about, and we would have those students here and recognize them. I hope we can get back to that, because that was, that was the joy of being a Board of Education member, just seeing these kids excel. And so many, I'm following right now a young man named Dallas Bennett, who was a student body president last year, University of Miami, and he's on the Supreme Court of the University of Miami. And this is a bright city kid. So, we've got kids like that everywhere in these schools that are doing so good that, that, I, I, I just wanna find a shout-out program, we can spend some time and look at it, and recognize the great accomplishments our kids are doing, the great accomplishments our school is doing for everybody. So, that's a good point.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. Those are all the discussion items that, that are on the agenda, and with your permission, we should move into the action items.
Let's go.
So, I recommend to the Swain County Board of Education that you approve the minutes of the February 8, 2021, open session meeting.
Do we have a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
All in favor by a show of hands? All right, it's passed.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Jason Heron as custodian at Swain West Elementary effective March 1st, 2021. Jason, wonderful, wonderful man, excellent worker, was offered a significant pay raise eight minutes from his house in Franklin. You know, and you can't blame a fellow for doing that, but boy, if he ever comes back to Bryan City, we need to find a place for him somehow. He's a good guy.
All right.
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Chelsea Jones as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective March 5th, 2021. Chelsea is a new mother. I don't know if the child is one years old yet or not, and, and Chelsea has made the decision to focus on being a mother for a while, and I don't blame her.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Renee Peoples as teaching and learning coach at Swain West Elementary effective March 1st, 2021. Renee has been with us for a long time. You probably know a lot about her, of her history. What you don't know maybe is her future. Renee is leaving education to become a missionary, and she just felt like this was the timing that, that God wanted for her to follow, so she's given us her resignation. She's gonna be a loss, just like everybody is, but she has helped Swain County schools tremendously in her, her tenure here.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? All right, motion's carried.
Now, we get to the less sad pieces. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Dr. Teresa Ann Karen as temporary part-time math tutor, online facilitator at Swain High School effective January 11th, 2021. Dr. Karen worked with us for years, outstanding math teacher at the high school. She retired, and now she is helping provide online tutoring for our math students. That's a good, that's a good addition.
Yes.
Motion.
All right. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands again. All right, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Autumn Kendall Cochrane as assistant girls' soccer coach effective February 11th, 2021. Autumn, or Kendall, excuse me, is one of our own and has come back to work with us now.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Abigail Anderson as after-school assistant effective March 3rd, 2021.
Okay. Do we have a motion in second?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Carly Wilcox as after-school assistant effective March 3rd, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in, all in favor by a show of hands? All right, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Samantha Flanagan as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective March 15th, 2021. I believe that she is going to be replacing Chelsea Jones in that position, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that Samantha has been working for us as an assistant for a while.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Alicia Williamson as custodian at Swain West Elementary effective March 4th, 2021. If you'll remember back at the beginning of the school year, we hired some 28-hour custodians because we needed some extra support and some extra help. Alicia was one of those. One of the reasons that we wanted to do that was it gave us an opportunity to test drive a little while, and she has proven herself and has shown that she's gonna be a, a great worker at West Elementary so far.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Okay, motion carried.
You may recognize this name. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Steve Jamison as teacher assistant as, at Swain East Elementary effective March 8th, 2021. Steve used to be a pastor in Bryan City, and he was a pastor over, I believe, at Shoal Creek Baptist for a while. He's not a full-time pastor anymore. The Jamison legacy, his wife worked here, his daughter works at East, it just continues. I guess it's just in the family.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion carried.
This next one is a rare find, folks. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Arvis Bowman, or Bowman, as speech pathologist at Swain East Elementary. If you find a speech pathologist and you can, you can hire him, you need to hire him. And we were able to, because we have extensive needs there, and so I really recommend that we accept this guy.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Joe Hagler as part-time custodian at Swain East Elementary effective February 25th, 2021.
Motion. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Sumer, Susan Zimmerman, retiring effective June 4th, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
Now, Joanne, we need to hire our assistant softball coaches, or one of them anyhow, right? Okay, one for approval, one for hiring. Okay. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education, I don't know that this is on your, it's on the chart that was given to you, okay? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Taylor Day as an assistant softball coach effective March 1st, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Okay.
Now, this next one is a little different, okay? Because this is, we're not hiring this young lady. She's going to be working with the team. If the, if the softball team eclipses 20 players, then we may need to look at hiring her as staff, because that was the agreement that we, we came to last year when we were looking at, how do we determine how many coaches we're gonna have in different places, okay? So, I, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve Caitlin Dills as a softball coaching intern effective March 1st, 2021. This is an unpaid position. Caitlin Dills works for us in the school system, so this is not a volunteer issue, okay? She already has a clear background check, everything's in place for her, and she has agreed to do this for nothing. So, I would recommend that you approve her as an assistant coach.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor by a show of hands?
On the right side of that, that pa, that paper that you have there, that chart, you will see that there are several current employees that we will be using in our after-school program as well. Didn't feel like they need to be necessarily approved because they're already employees.
Right.
Just wanted you to have that as a point of information. Those are all of the personnel issues. I recommend now that the Swain County Board of Education approve the Alarca property resolution as you have received it. That will give us the opportunity to move forward on that.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? All right, motion's carried.
Mr. McKinney, we'll need to sign that at the end of the meeting this evening, so that we can put that into action. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as Ms. Tredway presented them to you.
So, move. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
And I think this is the last item. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the auditor contract as they have that contract in hand, as you have it before you. And what's the name of the company?
Boggs, Crump, and Brown.
Thank you. With that company.
All right. Do we have a motion, second?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I, I don't believe that we need to approve the calendar change for March the 26th. I believe we just make that shift, just like we make other shifts in that way, unless you want to approve that we move the remote day from the 24th to the 26th. That's totally at your discretion.
No, I just.
If we're enough, that needs a motion.
If you want to approve it, it would need a motion. You know, you'd approve moving the, the, the remote learning day from the 24th to the 26th for the purpose of allowing our staff to complete their immunization cycle. If you want to, if you want to, you don't have to approve that, we can just do it.
I don't think we need to. We've done this before.
Yeah, we have. Yes. I just wanna give you the opportunity, okay?
I appreciate that. I don't want to leave the flexibility of scheduling with yourself.
Okay. And, and I'll, I'll continue that way, but I'll make sure that I, I keep you informed.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Norton? There are some FYI events that I, I need to bring to your attention. You see the ones that we have written down there. We'll have the calendar for the next school year to you at, at our next meeting. We need to go ahead and get that approved. However, I don't, I don't know what next year's gonna look like completely, and if the legislation goes through that we've been speaking about that gives us calendar flexibility, along with some other districts, we may be able to look at some additional changes after that. But we need to have something on the books, okay? Graduation, we are setting graduation for June 5th. I believe that we'll be able to, to hit that date now. I think that if God's willing, and I mean that seriously, that the negative weather won't affect us anymore. That also means that spring break is set, and I know that we got a lot of staff that are really happy about that. None of them any less than I am. But we'll tell you a little bit about what graduation. We're, we're gonna do our best to have as traditional a graduation as we can this year. With the 30% allowance for those type of events that have, that the governor and DHHS has given us, that will allow us to put somewhere around 1,100 spectators in the stands. That is the number that we are using for athletic events as well at this time. We took all of the seating capacity and measured that at 30%, and we are going to be allowing 800 home spectators and 300 visiting spectators.
Is that both sides?
Both sides, yes. We're also going to take 100 tickets, and we're going to distribute them between the schools proportionately, so that some of our staff will still be able to come to our ballgames at no cost to them. Because in the past, all you had to do was to show your, your badge and you got in. We really can't operate that way now because of the restrictions. Okay? And so, I'll be distributing those tickets out to the, at the schools later on this week. Need for you to know that there are a couple of fundraising events that are coming up. Just want you to be aware of. One is a trikathon for St. Jude's. This is something that the Pre-K does every single year. The donation process will be online, and they can access, the public can access that by using the Pre-K's Facebook page. They will actually do their trike event on March the 26th, but there will not be any spectators. It'll just be the kids from Bright Adventures because of COVID restrictions. We're also planning a car show right now. We're planning it for April the 24th at the high school. I've cleared that through Allison Cochrane, and as long as we maintain the same restrictions that we're using for anything else, including sporting events, we're going to be fine. Our plan at this point is to probably use the parking areas down at the high school building itself for the automobiles that are gonna be showing, and then use parking up at the, the stadium for the spectators and down where the students are parking in the gravel lot next to the baseball field, okay? There will be the opportunity for vendors, but we will space them appropriately.[1787.33] but we will space them appropriately. Masks will be required, social distancing will be expected. There will be 15 feet between cars. We're going to make this as safe as possible. But it's an opportunity for the auto program to raise some funding for itself. There was one more thing that I was going to tell you about. Oh, yeah, that is the last week of baseball and softball season. So it is possible that we would have a makeup game on that Saturday, which would probably force us to move this car show to the first weekend in May. So that's their rain date, just in case. I just want you to know that those things are getting ready to happen, and we've cleared them effectively. Mr. McKinney, we're supposed to have a combined meeting with Cherokee Central Schools in the spring. In the past, we've gone there, or they've come here, we've had a meal. Because of COVID restrictions, I don't know if that's possible. Dr. Murray's secretary, Sunny Clapsaddle, is going to be in touch with you, if she hasn't already. And we need to work out a way to have a conversation with them, or at least share information. And we need to do that preferably by May. And that's really kind of late, but it, it'll be all right, okay?
Okay.
So be, be prepared for that. And the only other thing that I need to bring to your attention is we need to sign those resolutions there before you leave.
Right.
And I can't think of anything else to talk about tonight. I know you're tired of listening to me.
On the graduation, have y'all thought about, you give out all those tickets, and then it rains?
Have we thought about that? No, because it's not going to rain that day.
Well, I'm going to tell you, you know, I've been here, I always speak in experience. In the last graduation I held, we were leaving the field with soaked diplomas. We couldn't get too quick enough. You can't worry about that, because, but there is a possibility, you know, what you do if they, if you go in the gym.
Numbers could change by then, too.
Pardon me?
Numbers could change by then, too.
They, they could. There is, there's legislation for several different counties that have to, has to do with athletic events and graduation, moving that to 50%. And that legislation doesn't have to have the governor's signature, from my understanding, because of the way that's been written, and because of the small numbers of people. So, it's hard to know exactly what's going to happen between now and then. But I promise you, knowing Sonia Blankenship and the attention to detail that she has in everything, she'll have that base covered before we ever get there. So, we'll look at that. We're still going to have graduation on June 5.
That's good. That's good. Anything else? All right. Don't forget to sign this. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. All in favor by, holding your hand up. We don't have to stand up this time, because you got to sign this. We're adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.